Okay, so my name is Kimberly Becca and I'm the project manager with the City of San Jose of analyzing this general plan amendment. Here tonight is my supervisor Jared Hart and with the City of San Jose and the applicant represented by Melissa Birkin with Republic's family of companies. Tonight, for tonight's meeting, we'll do a brief presentation of staff as well as from the applicant and then we'll have a good chunk in the meeting dedicated to an open forum for you guys to ask questions and to provide comments for us to incorporate into our staff report as we develop our recommendation to the planning commission and to city council. So with that being said, let's discuss the proposal. The proposal was submitted by Republic, like mentioned, they'll be representing the land owner, which is the San Jose Evergreen Community College District. The proposal in question is for a general plan amendment. It will be amending the general plan's land use transportation diagram for a 27 acre site from public quasi-public to neighborhood community commercial. Please note that this is not a rezoning nor a site development permit. This is just simply a proposed amendment to the general plan land use transportation diagram. So for this site, this site is 27 acres. It is predominantly vacant with also some training facilities and offices on site. The general plan land use designation for this site is public quasi-public, which I'll explain what that means later. And then it has a zoning designation of R15 single-family residential and agriculture. So in order to understand what is being proposed, I'm going to provide more of a background of what is a general plan amendment? What is the general plan? What exactly are we analyzing here? So, what is a general plan? The general plan is the city's official policy statement regarding its future character, land use patterns, and quality of development. It was created in 2011. It provides a vision for the city's future and major strategies to achieve that vision. It also sets forth standards for city services such as police and fire response times, things like that. And it also has a land use transportation plan, which sets forth the land use for every property in the city. We've had a variety of different general plans over the years, starting in 1976 with the adoption of our first general plan and ending with today's general plan, envision San Jose 2040, which is adopted in 2011. So the general plan land use transportation diagram is shown here. You can see there's a variety of different colors on this map and each color represents a different land use ranging from residential to industrial to open space to mixed-use commercial, et cetera. So how it's applied to the proposal and to this site specifically? The existing general plan land use designation, as mentioned before, is public quasi-public as shown to the left. What the applicant is proposing to do is change the land use for the site to neighborhood community commercial as shown on the map to the right. So what exactly do these land uses mean? The existing land use is public quasi-public. It is used to designate public land uses including schools, colleges, corporation yards, homeless shelters, libraries, fire stations, convention centers and auditoriums, museums, government offices and airports, just to name a few. It can also be used for private uses that serve a public purpose, such as private schools, daycare centers, hospitals, public utilities and facilities used to provide public services. So the proposed land use designation of neighborhood community commercial supports a broad range of commercial activity. It supports neighborhood-serving retail and services and commercial professional office development. It should have a strong connection to provide services and amenities for the nearby community. It should have an urban form that supports walking, transit and public interaction. It allows for a floor area ratio or FAR of up to 3.5. What that means is it could potentially allow development up to three and a half times the size of the site. However, for this specific proposal, it should be noted that it is in the Evergreen East Hills area development policy, which limits the amount of development they will be able to do, which I'll go into on the next slide. I've had a lot of questions about whether this land use allows residential. This land use does not allow residential, so it's only commercial office and retail. So the Evergreen East Hills, their development policy was approved in 2008 by city council. What it does is allows a limited increase in development in the Evergreen East Hills area and it also ties that development to transportation infrastructure improvements. It provides capacity for potentially 500 residential units, 500,000 square feet of retail and 75,000 square feet of commercial for the entire area development policy. Since 2008, we've had a number of developments come through that were approved, so the remaining capacity within this area is approximately 59,000 square feet of commercial and 44,000 square feet of office, equaling about 103,000 square feet total. So what are the next steps? Why are you here? So tonight, we would like you to provide any comments and we'll answer any questions you may have. We are reviewing the applicant's proposal to state whether we'd like to approve or deny the request to the planning commission. So we're taking in your input tonight and evaluating the proposal with the general plan. There's also an environmental review being conducted right now, which is in the form of an initial study. The environmental consultant is incorporating staff's comment. I know on the fact sheet it says it's available tonight. Unfortunately, we tried to get it available for you guys to review for the community meeting, but it should be posted sometime this week, so I apologize for the delay on that. Once we receive your input tonight and develop our recommendation to the planning commission, we'll be taking this to hearing on September 28, 2016. We'll be noticing this to the community, then 1,000 feet of the site, as well as through our email blasts like we have been. And then it will eventually go to city council, who will be making the final decision on November 15 of this year. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'll now turn it over to Melissa.
Hi, good evening. It's fine. So Republic is a local land developer located in San Jose. We specialize in mixed-use residential and commercial projects. We also have a history of public-private partnerships similar to the one that we do have with the San Jose Evergreen Community College District. Some of these projects include projects in Midtown where we worked with the Valley Transportation Authority and we're currently working on a project with BART at the Millbrae BART station. Both of these projects have required a lot of community outreach and input from the community as well. So in 2014, Republic was selected to be the developer of the 27 acres of land identified as surplus next to the Evergreen Valley College. So this is the first step in that process, the general plan amendment. So the proposed land use designation of community neighborhood commercial will essentially allow for a wider variety of amenities and services for the community and the college to utilize. So Kimberly touched on the uses and I'll sort of just touch on a couple uses as well. Retail, restaurants, professional offices, medical offices, hospital uses, even educational uses, and residential is not permitted under this land use designation. Additional benefits could include job creation and creating a space that is active throughout the day for the community and the college to utilize. It would also help connect the college that is sort of in the back of the site with the rest of the community. So assuming that the general plan amendment does get approved in November, we would come back with a plan development zoning either at the end of this year or early next year. And at that time, we will have specifics about the project, specifically like a site plan, specific uses that, you know, we can support with the market demand, architecture, circulation, landscaping, all those details come sort of at the next step at the zoning stage. We will continue working with city staff at the zoning to identify additional environmental impacts that could arise with the specific development, including maybe traffic and any of the development capacity issues that Kimberly mentioned. The zoning process will also allow us to continue our outreach with the community and continue to take your input. So I will leave it at that and then answer any questions. Thank you.
So we're here tonight to get your input, like I mentioned earlier, and we'll be incorporating your input in our staff reports that will be going to the planning commission and city council, so they'll be able to see what your concerns are. You may fill out one of the comment cards that was left, the agenda, if you wish to provide your comments privately or separately, or if you wanted to provide written comment for us to scan into the report. Otherwise, what we're going to do is we're going to ask you to raise your hand and we're going to call on you. As you can see, there are many people here tonight, so if you can, please limit your comments to a minute, so we can have everyone be able to speak. If you'd like to, you can say, "I agree with such and such comment stated by the person over there." We'll also have Jared you writing down your comments on the pad over here, so you can say, like, "Yes, that's what I said, that was the intent of what I wanted to say," so you know that we're accurately understanding your comments.
In other words, they want to, this developer wants to move a solid land to commercial. That's my question. Would everybody please raise their hand that is for that?
For commercial.
Okay, next question. Will everybody please raise their hand that wants to retain it as solid zone land? Okay? I have one other question. Thank you. I want that noted.
We're noting, we're noting we'll comment, sir.
To the planning commission. You left one out, I'm not sure. And one more. The people who want a business, are they the trades?
Excuse me, sir, can we have one speaker at a time?
The other one is, where are you getting the water? That's the question, but brown is the new green, the sign on 280 is severe drought. San Luis reservoir is drawn down, Santa Clara Valley water, so it cannot draw out of that reservoir. That land is currently followed. When it rains on, it goes down into the ground and recharges the groundwater basin. If it's developed, there's going to be hardscape and runoff. Where are you getting the water from?
Thank you.
Where are you getting the water from?
That will be analyzed and be...
You don't know already?
It'll be steadily water supply and hydrology and water flow to be analyzed and the environmental initial study.
The other one is the roads have been maintained at, the roads have been maintained at a very low substandard level for 20 years. I don't know if the people here realize or have seen the condition of our roads. They're unsafe. The general plan was a good general plan, but it's been steadily avoided. The density of development in this area has just gone up tremendously. Now, on the water issue, the city is permitting development all over its area of boundary. So where is the water coming from? Anyway, I think the most important thing was to show the hands. Generally speaking, they don't want the development.
I live in the estates, that's just south of the Evergreen Valley College. The two questions I have is number one, what I read in the Evergreen Times is that the contract with the police academy had been canceled and that was an income of those 1.5 or so million dollars, they are now trying to gain. Next question. Once the 27 acres, I believe the value of the land would be something in the excess of 80 or 100 million dollars. Then we're only getting 1.5 million per year, that is, okay, I'm going to the car dealership, I get a new Tesla and I just pay about 100 dollars a year. So that really doesn't complete. So that's my biggest concern. What is actually all the money I'm going to? And for 1.5 million, I don't think it's even worth the trouble. We should build facilities, buildings to actually further the education of the Evergreen Valley College to increase the offering they have. And I heard a few years ago, several even companies bought who are interested in using the land of the Evergreen Valley College for education, particularly when you think about autonomous automobiles, which is now getting big here in Silicon Valley. But hey, they need all the students, they can get to make it happen. And here we have a perfect opportunity to have that, to use the land for precisely that particular purpose. Right now, before it's today, I can go shopping anywhere else, I don't need it just before my house door, even though I actually already have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind the planning staff that when you denied this project previously, you had supported the general plan designation for public quasi-public and you had supported the general plan designation irrespective of the fact that housing was also developed. I also want to remind you that the planning history of this site has involved the use of city designated task forces to vet the land use plans for the site. It's also, there's been a history of economic studies have been done to look at the issue of the economic viability of commercial uses in the area and also to look at the oversaturation issue of commercial uses in Evergreen. And this was all prior to the consideration of a general plan change. I also think it's significant that with the neighborhood community commercial designation in your planning documents, you talk about that this designation is used for sites with urban villages where, quote, "higher density growth is focused." Also, thank you for reminding us about the Florida ratio in the neighborhood community commercial. It was just increased this year as a consent calendar item from a Florida ratio of 2 to 3.5. I know there's a lot of people who want to speak. Also, I'm a little disappointed to find out that the decision to not do an environmental impact report has already been made at the staff level prior to the issuance of the initial study. I realize that that's a policy on the part of the city, but it's not one that really includes the community. It seems like the decision of whether or not to do an environmental impact report should be made after the initial study is conducted, which isn't even yet available.
Thank you.
See, you retired, plus I'm a student at Evergreen. And in the fall, spring, they were talking about this land and they came to the school to let the students know about it. 12 students showed up and they put out a little table display of their plan for changing those 47 acres into housing, a swimming center, a health facility and commercial for a thousand a month or a million a year rent. And then now, they want to change that to do this, quasi-commercial, to get the housing, to get the swimming center. I mean, you're changing the program throughout this past six months. We don't know what's going down, what your changes are going to be after you meet with the council members. What the final thing is, we don't even know how much the school is charging them now because they have to renegotiate that, not have to, they chose to. And where's the trustees? Are they here? I don't see a trustee.
They are in that pink location.
Thank you.
To be clear, this is about the general amendment and I am against that general amendment being changed at all. There's a purpose of plans that there is public quasi-public. It can serve so many uses for that, that this community, much over what we're doing for retail. And for those of you who are in trade, we can build things on this property, it don't have to be stores. There's lots of things we can do that will serve this community's needs. I do have a question on the proposed, which was sent out last night from the city, actually the night before, from the city and from the applicant. It shows 31.56 acres and we keep talking about 27. Why is it four and a half acres more than you?
Can you speak a little louder?
I said, the proposal shows 31.56 acres from both the city and the applicant and we keep talking about 27 acres. I don't know what the four and a half acre difference is due to.
There was a discrepancy, I think, when the original sort of boundary was prepared around the surplus area. It's 27 acres, that was what was identified back in 2004, so we're moving forward with the 27 acres.
Not for the argument of the proposal that was submitted in March?
Right, that was incorrect. It's been updated.
So why hasn't it been corrected?
I believe everything that has been moving forward is 27. It's 27.1, it's approximately 27 acres.
The application says 31.
That was mistaken.
So we need to see some corrected applications.
We don't require the applicant to submit a corrected application. We had them clarify the amount of acreage that was proposed and they submitted the correct, where's the diagram? This diagram here that shows that this is the 27 acres that they are proposing to change. I can send that out if you guys would like.
But I believe, the question that I have is that you, when you have a contract, you go as the contract's written and if the contract is incorrect, it should be corrected. I don't think that, you know, your word of mouth, you could be gone five years from now. The fact that the mixed-use box is checked, you said it's incorrect, but you're not correcting it. So if it's incorrect, send out a corrected form.
Because I'm just saying, how our policy goes is just we don't require another submission, we just refer to the letter of interactions with the applicant and then whatever gets approved or denied by city council, that's in our record, not the initial application because that can change as time goes on.
Harry, just to hand it up, I have a comment and I will submit these written forms after I'm complete here. The designation of Evergreen Valley College land in East San Jose for commercial use would deny city residents of equitable distribution of public facilities and would fall the city in the misuse of state public education funds. There is insufficient land allocated for community college facilities in East San Jose region for the population size being served. To assure proper equitable distribution of public facilities, the city needs to deny this application and plan to allocate more land for community colleges. There's a table here that shows the disparity in the valley. Plan for the equitable distribution of public facilities is a requirement under the constitution and the state provides general plan guidelines to ensure compliance. This application has not been evaluated to state general plan guidelines. State education facility bonds approved by the voters at the time land purchase required, the land must only be used for public school facility. The developer has not provided any evidence to support that state education bond funds were not used. The developer has cited California Education Code 813060 as a basis of legal rights to develop on the land. However, these legislative statutes are inapplicable to land purchase with voter-approved bonds when the use requirements are specified. Voter-approved bond use requirements have precedents. In order for the city to adhere to the principles of equal distribution of public facilities as required by the constitution, this application must be rejected and the city must start planning in accordance with the state general plan guidelines.
I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. My name is Al Susna, I'm a longtime resident of Evergreen. I've lived here, I grew up here and I raise my kids here. And I've seen a lot of changes over the years. I've come here representing a resident of Evergreen and I also represent operating engineers Local 3. And I appreciate the relationship and the integrity of the developer and reaching out during this process, the integrity of it. And I support the land use and the land use changes. I've been a trade guy, my dad was a trade guy. And jobs like this is what's enabled me to live in the community here. Like I said, I've been in Evergreen over 45 years and I've seen a lot of change here over the years. I'm sure a lot of you residents here wouldn't be able to live here in the community hadn't been for some of those changes in the development, quite frankly, because when I grew up here, I remember when Evergreen College wasn't even a college, it was dirt, it was orchards. So again, we support, I support personally, the development of this project. I do have a couple of questions. I was wondering if you could tell me how many temporary jobs the project would create and how many permanent jobs the project would create.
There is no proposed project at this time, like I stated before, it's just a land use change. Staff has not received from the applicant nor the landowner a site development proposal nor a rezoning because in order to move forward with that proposed project, they need to go through the general plan amendment process. So this is kind of a step one for them, but at this time, no details have been provided.
Yeah, I would answer similar to Kimberly. At this point, we're sort of just trying to get through the general plan amendment process and assuming that does get approved, we would start looking at specific uses and then we could look at temporary or long-term jobs.
To the gentleman from the, for the union, I lived in San Jose since 1960, in Evergreen Valley since 1973. He mentioned about being orchards before, there was nothing over here at the college and that's the point. The college was developed to educate future generations. There has been a change in our valley from agriculture to technical. We need our children, grandchildren and future generations to be able to compete worldwide. Yes, we need to build them and they can do that for us, but we want school projects, not retail stores that the students are going to go and earn minimum wages. Education in the future for our generations. Now, 95 years, it brings you back to 2111 years. We're giving up this land for 95 years. We are not developers, nor are we people that are expecting a return of investment. The return of investment is in our children. That's where we want it.
I hear, I hear you referring to this land as belonging to the college. The college is totally supported by our taxes, therefore this land belongs to us. We don't want the college board of seven, eight people to decide what they do with our land, with our tax money, when they are just simply working 40-hour or less jobs a week and they go home someplace else. We want Evergreen to stay beautiful and peaceful and we want our college to grow. We don't want 18,000 of our students going across town when we have land to develop the best community college you could have in this whole area. Instead, they're letting it deteriorate and eventually, I believe, they want it gone. And now you said that 27 acres is going to be for retail, offices or whatever. How mu, are you serious? 27 acres, you're going to put little offices, a little retail store? I believe you're going to sneak the housing in down the line.
Yes, I do too. So we're right, at this point, I mean, like I said, we're looking at all uses that are consistent with the proposed designation, whether it's retail, offices, medical offices, so providing jobs that way and hopefully amenities that you all can benefit from. It's not saying that educational uses cannot be developed and then in terms of residential, that would have to go through another general plan cycle. I don't know if that would be supported, but you know, today we're looking at just the change to the neighborhood community commercial.
The people have been against it. When will you listen?
Can I answer your question? The applicant is welcome to submit as many proposals as they want and us as staff are required to evaluate.
I don't hold this personally against you, thank you. The most important thing we saw up here was the date, September 28, the planning commission, all of us need to show up. That's where we stop it. And after that, I saw November 15, at city hall. And I hope it ends at that point. This is just a smoke string, a smokescreen. We want this to be a school. We're in the top 10 cities of the country, we should have the top 10 college in the country. country. We don't want businesses, we don't want apartments, we do have high respect for the trade, but you guys can build, you can build more school classrooms. Thank you, Dave Crottezi for coming.
My name is Rick, I also live in this area for some time, since seventy-seven. Just about three hundred yards from this site. And I have a problem with, I'm against this proposal. I have a problem with the designation as surplus land. I don't understand how they can come to that conclusion. Surplus land to me is, is like saying, my savings account in the bank is surplus money. I'm never gonna spend that money. I don't have a use for it, I should give it away. That, that's, that's fairly intuitive to me. When I came to this area, that college isn't nearly what it was, what it is today. It has, it has grown, there's been a lot of construction going on there and back, I'm retired now, but back when I was looking to further my education, I tried to apply to classes here. They didn't have the classes that I needed. Deansa did and I went to Deansa. I'm not in that situation any longer, but I understand that a lot of the people, it's still continuing today, that same situation. So I don't understand the designation of surplus land, it's not right. This whole, this discussion would be moot if, if that designation were not surplus land. It should remain as college land for educational purposes only.
You know, I've lived in Evergreen since the late seventies, you know. And it's funny because I came from Santa Barbara area, but one thing, you know, and I worked, I worked for it at Evergreen. The one thing that I'm concerned about, when I began at City College, City College is an impacted area and so it had, you know, very little, and the whole point was, the district buying the land in Evergreen was so that we could have some expansion, okay? One of my greatest concerns is when we, there's two buildings, big major buildings that we're gonna have to tear down and we can't build on it because of the situation. And you know, and so I look at that, well, that's nice, you know, cause, you know, but the case is, we really haven't had a conversation in our district, what CTE programs do we want to really grow? What do we want to do? Because there's so much, you know, I'm fighting for us to have a culinary school, but that's kind of me, but, but you know, and so if my biologist could do organic growing, we could do all kinds of things, but we, you know, this has happened and we, to be honest, we haven't had a lot of conversation about it and if we give up this land, you know, you know, and we might just need maybe five or ten more acres, but we need to decide what as a campus district, you know, programs do we want to have so that students can move on and do. You talk about, you know, you know, constructions over there, well, the only construction that we have is over at City College and kind of jobs, we have our automotive, which is growing, our nursing program, but there's so many other CTE programs that we could do if we have the land to do it and, and so, and I live here in Evergreen and I'm just having a great concern that we don't slow down and have some more conversation and not be in the bigger, because even when the developer, when I saw and they said that they were gonna do this, this pool thing, you know, and everything, well, I was kind of like, because here I'm physically disabled, I'm thinking, well, if, if, if our kids say we're gonna do a bond, why don't we build the pool? In fact, decades ago, the city was going to build a pool for us and, you know, and all we had to do, maintain it, but we didn't follow through with that. But why aren't we doing that? All the seniors, people who were my age, you know, we could do all kinds of things for the disabled, all kinds of wonderful things, but we need to be able to have, we need to force ourselves to have those conversations and not to be in a rush about giving up the land, because the one thing that I'm concerned, even when, when, you know, you guys are talking about building the, that's what really hit me, because normally I'm kind of like, okay, whatever, but when you talk about, you know, building these apartments, first I'm like looking at the traffic, but inside I'm thinking, we're only gonna get this much money? When I saw that over at, you know, Mission, they're giving four or five million dollars for, you know, for that area that they were getting, so I'm like, uh-uh, this, this is not reasonable. I'd rather, I'd rather vote on a bond that I know exactly what's happening and have my taxes for you than for this to be happening in my community.
Say, I have two questions. You mentioned the decision is being filed on November fifteen, why is it fifteen? Can you bring it forward before the election, November eight, so that we have our voices whoever, so we can see that the council or whoever, which side we can decide as the voters?
So the-
Is that my proposal? I mean, I'm suggesting if you can bring it forward before the election, November eighth is the election day. Why is it fifteen?
I hear you.
That's one question, one suggestion.
Can I answer or?
Sure.
No. So we have once per year, every fall, we have a general plan annual review cycle where all of the general plan, proposed general plan amendments go to city council. So these dates unfortunately cannot be moved around for each application. There's the planning commission hearing and then it goes to city council and there's a timeline, but that's a good suggestion, I hear you.
Number two, if we develop this land, we can develop it as a playground. If you, I'm a volunteer for soccer teams, if you go around and see that how many, we don't have enough field for our kids to play, practice soccer, baseball, you name it, we can develop temporarily for the fields and even the playgrounds. So again, that's my suggestion.
It's a great system and I've tended to community college, actually Sacramento, that's where I grew up, before attending UC Davis and graduating there. And so, you know, I'm a part of a group of residents that want to make Evergreen Valley College the best it can be and so to this end, I'm circulating a petition here and this petition here is against commercial development. And the school indeed has, you know, built a few buildings, you know, during this past year. So if you guys want to sign up, you know, you can contact me or pick up a flyer there. So my, I guess kind of question and comment here is, you know, the whole purpose of this is that, you know, you want to do a designation and this designation has all come about because of the development here and then we just need to make that very, very clear that if you didn't do the development here, this proposal, then you wouldn't have no, no reason to have a designation change from public quasi-public to neighborhood community commercial here, right? So my question here, is the, is the public better served by this new designation or what are we lacking if they do not have this new designation? The chancellor has talked about partnerships with industry with the likes of Apple or Tesla, that's fine. She's also talked about some pathways into the UC system or the state colleges, you know, new facilities, that's fine. She even threw out a proposal for Planetaryum, I don't know about that, but anyway, you know, can these facilities be done with the existing public quasi-public designation right now? So that's my question here. I want to also add a comment to this and I just want to make a couple of comments here. One of them is that, you know, I feel that there's a major disconnect between the district and the community. You know, what is highly objectable, objective, at least in my mind, is proposals by the, proposals given by the district and the developers is that there's a total lack of transparency. I earlier today talked with the applicant and she has not given me any details at all whatsoever of this, as to what is going on there. And that is important because we want to know what the impact is to the, to the community and to the school itself in terms of its future growth here. There's nothing on the table that I know of that you can actually review and I can, I don't know if you can actually review, tell more details of what the actual proposal is because that is the driving force for this new designation. So you have to justify that. And just as a gauge, you know, at the last, a public sentiment, we also had a meeting in July eleventh at Evergreen Valley College and it was a show of hands, how many people were for the development? There's two hands was raised, one was Jeffrey Lee, so the board of trustees and there's one other hand, I believe it was the chancellor?
The chancellor.
Yeah, the chancellor, okay, I wasn't sure. And a hundred percent of the residents raised their hand, hand up, hand up, hand were against the development, against the new designations here. So that is absolutely clear, that's a public record, it's in the newspaper, so that's absolutely clear. I've also been circulating this petition. This morning I had two hundred and twenty-three signatures as of right now, there's about two hundred and sixty and the listed numbers are growing and growing, so I can give you the actual comments of what people are saying on the petition, I think it's very useful as well as a list of all the people that have signed up so far and I think that gives you a good sentiment of what's going on. This is my last comment here and that is that many in the community feel that the land is precious and it represents opportunity, growth and prosperity to a new generation of students. As President Hong said, forty-six percent of the students, this is the July eleventh meeting, are first generation students, first time going into college. That's a wonderful thing. And I believe that Evergreen Valley College should be all about expanding itself to promote education and not for short-term gains, for, for long-term leases that stifle growth essentially forever, well, ninety-five years.
He asked you a question.
Yeah, so the question is, the proposals that was talked about, you know, the, you know, partnerships with industry, you know, it could be building training facilities for Tesla or Apple, or there could be, you know, UC extension, you know, or even a Planetaryum. Can these be done with existing designation right now?
Forward with those types of uses, they would have to change the zoning designation, but the general plan, land use designation would support public service uses.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
We don't need to make a designation yet.
A land use general plan, correct, but you would need to change the zoning from the residential and agriculture.
A fourth generation Evergreen family, so our roots here are deep. I also have worked at the college as a temporary employee, so I have a very strong opinion about this land. As a student, I returned as a student in two thousand and three and in two thousand and four, as you said, the board approved for the change of use. And I remember as a student, they were trying to, to again, sell or lease that land at that time and we prevented it. We felt very strongly that the students that are served in this population are, are underserved children, underserved adults. And yes, many students from this side of the valley go to Deansa and also go to, to Mission College and West Valley, but there are also many, many students who have never thought of going to college and they are underserved and we're just now beginning to really design our programs to serve that community. If we lose this land, we won't have the ability to expand and to serve that community that we so desperately need to help rise up. So I am very much opposed to this land use change. I am not necessarily opposed to maybe just the corner where the old district office is. I think if we wanted to maybe develop that, that would be okay with me.
The corner?
The very corner where the district office is, just that very corner. I'm okay with that because to me, that would be some money coming in and that other corner is already commercial. But the rest of the land, we need for our children and our children's children, for the future generations. We can't go up, we cannot renovate Acacia or Cedro or Rote Life because we looked at that. It costs more than building new to renovate it, to bring it up to code. So we need that existing land to build new buildings, new programs to serve our community, not just Evergreen, but south, north to Lepitas and down into Morgan Hill. All those students come this way. So we need that for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you go sit? As members of this community, we notice both the faculty and community working together to stop this development and chase after the ideal of Foot Hill Deansa without much consideration towards the different beginnings of Evergreen Valley College and those colleges have and the differences in their funding through decades. Foot Hill Deansa, both of those colleges began with fully facilitated campuses. EVC opened with rebuilding. Foot Hill was built during the nineteen fifties during a booming economy. Evergreen Valley College was built in the nineteen seventies with a struggling economy. Foot Hill Deansa College's district budget is nearly three times that of our district's budget. Money, we believe that is the sole reason why eighteen thousand five hundred kids from San Jose flock to Foot Hill yearly. We were against the development last year, however, now we cannot discount the development if the students will get some of the same amenities as offered at Foot Hill Deansa. The inequity problem that EVC is bigger than land development issue. EVC's struggle is indicative of how California education funding fails students in poorer areas with measures like Prop thirteen. Only forty-two point two percent of Eastside Union High School graduates are prepared for college. Compare that to eighty-nine percent of Palo Alto Unified. The difference between both communities is property taxes. Insufficient public funding of education impacts not only K through twelve funding, but community college districts as well. Inadequate funding of our local San Jose Community College district causes San Jose students to attend better facilitated colleges, offering more academic programs and it forces your district to search for alternative revenues such as this development, which will generate a very small revenue, one point five percent of their present one hundred and one million dollar budget. However, the Evergreen marketplace that everybody goes to at San Felipe Aniur Buena did pay for the district's retiree benefits fund, leaving money in the district's budget for education. The revenue generated by this development is earmarked for the support of student success programs, student success programs to improve completion and transfer rates. If you want a fully equipped school, you must be willing to raise money to build new structures and most importantly, support the programs they're in and maintain them. It's one thing to go for a bond measure, build a building, then not have the money to keep the program going or maintain the buildings. The public-private partnership is so, the private entity will pay for the maintenance of the building and faculty can use the building and the district doesn't have to maintain it. If you want to solve the problem, the Eastside inequity lobbying for a community college parcel tax, pass it and support the district's bond measure. In two thousand and ten, there was a parcel tax passed by San Mateo Community College. In two thousand and twelve, San Francisco Community College and Peralta College passed a parcel tax. You need to put your money where your mouth is. If you have an idea that might make EVC better and the student experience competitive with other community colleges, not only make your voice heard, but invest your ideas, in your ideas. Our district has an education foundation that is paltry compared to Foot Hill Deansas and West Valley Mission Colleges because the graduates and the private partners from those community colleges support them. Dr. Deborah Budd, the new chancellor, has a vision for improving EVC, but she may not like the vision, she does have one. Dr. Budd will improve EVC, she wants to adhere to SB Senate Bill fourteen forty, which required the California community colleges to add more transfer pathways to CSUs with associate degrees for transfer. EVC currently has eight, by two thousand and seventeen, they're hoping to have seventeen.
You said you're gonna have twenty-eight percent, is that correct?
The planning commission, Mary?
Planning commission.
Is it twenty-eight percent, is that correct?
And then you're gonna make a recommendation to the board, right?
So we make a recommendation to the planning commission and staff and the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council.
If, if you don't do your job, can that go forward to the city council?
If we don't do our job?
If you don't do your staffing job, you said you have to engage the community, does this council engage in the community presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're gonna contact people a thousand feet, I think I heard that, right?
Yes, sir.
If you don't do that, can you put that forward to the city council?
If you don't do that, can you put that forward to the city council?
We have to follow proper policy.
Why? It's a loaded question, just try. So here's what I'd like.
Okay.
I would like you to recommend to the planning commission to engage the city attorney to determine whether this request has merit, because the people that put this in front of you did not follow state law or state requirements. They did not engage the community at all. I'm happy to talk to the city attorney. So my point to you is, I would like on the record, an opinion by the city attorney that this can even go forward if it was actually done fraudulently, illegally. I think there's OCI issues, I think there's a number of issues here. So I would like, for the record, the city attorney to determine and investigate whether or not this could actually be put forward.
Okay.
Please?
Our city attorney evaluates the process once it comes to our door. So they evaluate whether our process is done properly, whether the school, whether the applicant outside of this process, that's not something that we have the option over, that's not something that we have power to enforce and regulate.
No, I appreciate that, but I would like, I would like the city attorney to recommend that if there was a fraudulent situation that was being put forward and the city knew about it, would, would he recommend to the city council to even vote on this? I would think if it was illegal and didn't follow state rules, it would have to be rejected. Much like a court would reject something if it was brought up as an appeal and the law wasn't followed, they would push it back. My point is, I would like to see the city attorney take some responsibility to determine whether or not state law was followed on this. And I know, I know it wasn't.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to talk to the city attorney.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Josue Garcia, I represent all the consulting trades. And we actually met, well, somebody mentioned earlier that most of the district was against it, but no, I represent more than fifty thousand, fifteen thousand people that live in the district, and we are in favor of the project. I myself, I've lived in the district for over thirty years, and I'm also in favor of the project. I also attended Evergreen College. And we, every time there's a significant project, a trades, and that's my job to meet with the community. In the beginning, I met with some of you, and some of you were very against the project. And I met with you to hear you out, because I have to report to the trades what I hear from the community. And now, some of you are in favor of the project after you were against it at some point.
The only living creatures that never learn from our own mistakes, right? And we should just step back and realize that, you know, many other communities that have gone through this kind of a promise of ninety-five years, none of us are going to be alive in ninety-five years from now, so that we can determine exactly what's going to happen. Truly, you know, this gentleman is talking about some employment, which I figure there will be minimum wage. That doesn't bring anything to this community, right? We don't need minimum wage jobs. For that, we still, we already have McDonald's and a few other things like that, right? But we, we need to look at it for our children, the future of this community. And the reason why a lot of kids go away from here is because some of the most important classes that are needed to be taken in community college, and I'm not disrespecting all the classes, but you know, the math, the algebra, some of those that are the basics to get to a major university are full capacity, because there's no availability to go further than that. So why are we putting our children, or even ourselves, to have to drive for children or buying cars for our children to drive twelve, fifteen miles away from here, when we are paying the taxes already? This is a double dip, right? We're going to continue paying taxes, okay? And somebody's going to be giving a million and a half dollars, that means nothing. Who is really benefiting out of this?